Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you can begin. We are recording.
Okay, I hereby call the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty special meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Long Hill Township to order at seven thirty-three. Call to order a statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past twelve ten thirty P M. At any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later prescribed cutoff time. Hopefully you won't need to use that. Could you put a flag up? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God. Indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice. Uh, roll call.
All right. Roll call. Mr. Aroneo is excused this evening. Mr. Genakis? I saw him there. Oh.
Yeah, he just has. You're here. We see him here.
Thank you. Mr. Grosskopf?
I am here. Was the sound better?
No, it's still loud.
I'm sorry. I clicked on something else. I'm trying.
Okay.
That's all right. Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Hane?
Here.
Ms. Robertson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Johnson is excused tonight. Chairman, correct?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
I like your haircut, Jonathan. Looks good. Um, okay, the applications tonight. We have two of them. The first one is a use variance for height. Lot one three nine zero eight, lot one five dash zero one, zone Z, uh, C, I'm sorry. P S E N G Steel Tower off Long Hill Road, application number twenty-one dash two one Z. New Singular Wireless PCS hyphen LLC in parentheses, A T and T, those parentheses. Is the applicant here?
Yes, good evening. Christopher Quinn, I have the applicant.
Okay, uh, nice to see you. Uh, are your witnesses here?
I have one here. There were two more that they need to be let in.
Okay, one just raised his hand. Peter Sukala?
Yep, and then Paul Ricky.
And Paul Ricky, yep. Okay, promoting them to panelists right now. Okay. There we go.
And for the record, I did review the notice and it was sufficient as to timeliness and content. So the board does have your stick.
Thank you. Okay, uh, would you like to give us a little brief opening as to what your client wants and why you should get it?
Sure, sure, sure. So again, my name's Chris Quinn. I'm here. I'm here from A T and T. Uh, the property, it's the P S E G property is off Long Hill Road. It's in the C-zone. Um, we were actually here, I was actually in town hall in July in front of this board, uh, for A T and T, um, where just to give some, uh, history or recollection is there's been a P S E N G tower here for a number of years. A T T was approved to put antennas on this with the use variants back in, I think, two thousand and uh, I have to double check, but it was over ten years ago. Um, P S E G recently, as everyone probably has noticed, if you drive through town and or Bridgewater or other towns up down this right of way line, they have now been upgrading their transmission towers. They've been taking down the old lattice towers in order to accommodate higher capacity lines. They've got new structures in place. Um, A T and T and T-Mobile both had, uh, facilities on the old tower, as did the county. As part of that project, A T and T and T-Mobile removed their antennas off the old tower when it was before it was dismantled. In July, I was in front of this board. Uh, we obtained approval to go on a temporary tower that's on the same property a little bit closer to Long Hill Road. Um, part of that required us to go back to the old tower, uh, or rather the new tower once it was constructed. So at this point, um, if you've driven by the area, the towers are up. Uh, they actually, there's no lines to them. Um, the tower itself, uh, the lines are expected to be energized in, um, I guess, early spring, so around March. Um, so if you go there right now, uh, we're seeking approval to go back to the tower that was, uh, recently constructed.
Would you go, would you be going back to the tower before, uh, P S E N G puts their lines on or?
Um, it may, I'm not sure about the timing of the lines, but what the intent is, or what we're I think diligently trying to do is before it gets energized. So that it'll be energized in March, and our concern is that if we are not on, have the antennas on there, there's so many protocols and requirements that P S E G has where they have to turn the whole side off again in order for the antenna work to be done. Um, it will be a very lengthy amount of time that would be in place before A T and T would be able to put service on.
And also. It would be, it would be a little dangerous to try to do it with Android.
Yes, uh, so in fact, that's one of the reasons. So we are here because the height of the tower has increased and also because P S E G now requires that the antennas go above the conductor lines here. Um, and again, if you've seen this or you've driven by, you see that now these antennas typically stick up above the power lines. Uh, again, that's for safety reasons and it's a P S E G requirement. So, um, we're seeking height variance approval. Uh, previously, the antennas were approved. Uh, I think there were six antennas, three at a hundred fifteen feet, three at a hundred twenty-one feet that could sit there on that, uh, tower the way it was designed before. But based upon the new P S E G towers, there, the tower itself has went from a hundred and thirty-three feet to a hundred and fifty feet. And then P S E G's already installed, uh, the extension on top of one of the sides here to accommodate the antennas. So, um, I think you have A T and T here right now, and the next application is, uh, T-Mobile. Um, again, both will be going back onto this, uh, recently constructed transmission tower. The goal is to, um, again, continue providing service to the community. Uh, and that's really the purpose here. The additional height will definitely provide more coverage, but it's not really the reason why we're proposing the antennas at the site. We're proposing this, the antennas at the site because the antennas, it's a requirement of P S E G.
Well, what is the ultimate height that you would be going to?
So for A T and T, the height will go up to about one hundred sixty-one feet to the top of the antennas. Above A T and T is T-Mobile, and then I think there was a spot, a little bit of space reserved on the top in the event that the county wants to go forward or in the event that another carrier comes forward, but that was a P S E G determination. Um, so the pole itself, it looks like it's about a hundred and seventy-seven feet to the very tip-top of the extension that P S E G installed. Uh, A T and T would go at a maximum height of one hundred and sixty-one feet. So, uh, equipment, it will be low, it's going to be located a little bit shifted over from where it was before. Before is located right at the base of the transmission tower, the four lights, the transmission tower by that. Um, it's going to be moved a little bit further back away from, uh, Long Hill Avenue, um, Long Hill Road, sorry. I, in a compound, but again, it's just moved a little bit further back and it's, uh, but again, I'm actually almost getting into what our engineer has, but we have a plan and we can describe it for you. But I think that kind of gives you a flavor of why we're here. So, um, when we were here, I think it was asked that, again, if the height changed, Deborah said we had to come back and get amended, uh, height rates approval, and that's already.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the excellent synopsis. Uh, who would you like to, uh, be, um?
One of our civil engineers, Mr. Chikales.
Before we do that, let's have our attorney swear in our expert planner.
All right. I will swear in Ms. Chen. Do we have, we don't have our engineer tonight, right?
No, we didn't need.
Thank you. Would you raise your hand? Do you swear? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
I said it.
Thank you.
Okay, now who was your first witness?
Sure, uh, Mr. Chikales.
Okay, could you swear him in, please?
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear? Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God. Thank you.
Uh, Pete, can you? What, what is his title?
He's a civil engineer.
Okay, uh, just to clarify. Okay, your, your license is staying in New Jersey?
Correct.
Okay, and your license is current and active?
It is, yes.
When were you licensed?
Uh, two thousand seven.
And have you, uh, testified before boards of adjustment and planning boards?
Yes, over three hundred times.
Okay, I deem you qualified. All right, thank you.
Thank you. You make great movies. Uh, Mr. Chikales, I want to ask you to describe for the board. You heard kind of the, the introduction I gave. Can you share your screen with the plans and describe what A T and T's proposing here?
See if I can get this to work correctly, because I never use Zoom. Always working on Teams.
And for the record, these are the plans dated July eighth twenty-one, right? Last revised?
Yes.
Perfect.
What's up?
I said, and the board did receive these in advance of the hearing.
Yes, every, I think we, the only exhibits we may have are if, uh, there's questions from our editor for the engineer and ask him about the plots, he can have that as an exhibit, but otherwise everything else has been what submitted to the board is its own file. Okay, I see it, Pete.
All right, good. I was gonna say, everybody see my, my screen here. So as Mr. Quinn said, we are proposing a, to co-locate on an existing, well, now it's existing P S E and G tower. A T and T and T-Mobile were on that previous tower that was removed. And in front of me on my screen, I have the plans that were dated and just referenced. And looking at sheet C one, which is the site plan and general notes. On the left-hand side, you see Long Hill Road and that the existing tower, well, the tower that was removed is right in the center of our plant. The property itself is approximately a five-acre property, a hundred and fifty-foot wide right-of-way, uh, block thirteen nine oh eight, lot fifteen point oh one. And the new tower is being installed right next to where the old tower was. A proposed compound, which is going to be under T-Mobile's application is sitting at the base of that tower, a forty-by-fifty-foot tower, uh, compound. The compound will be accessed by an existing access drive, which is, uh, located off of Long Hill Road and depicted here on the plans. I'm going to go to the next page, which shows it's sheet C dash two, compound plan and elevation view. And it shows the base of that new tower. And what our compound looks like. The compound here depicts A T and T's equipment, which is an eight-by-eight. They call it a WIC. It's a walk-in cabinet. Basically, they have a eight-by-eight closet where they, it's climate-controlled and they can put their equipment inside of it. And T-Mobile's equipment will be the next application is actually shown on here as well on a four-by-twenty concrete pad. A T and T's equipment will be connected to the tower via co, via cables. So our radios will actually not be on the tower. Typically, if you see a normal application, they'd like to put the radios at the top of the tower because the, the, uh, whole system just works better. There's no loss. But since this is a live tower and there's safety issues, P S E G actually doesn't, they, they don't want uh, R U's or, or remote radio heads on the tower because they don't want people having to maintain that. Or if they go, if they actually go off and they stop working, the entire system, that one frequency stops working. So they keep that equipment at the base now. So all we have going up the tower are the, uh, the cables to the antennas. The, uh, compound itself, as I said, is a forty-by-fifty. It's going to be surrounded by a six-foot-high chain-link fence with a perma-head screening. Again, that's part of the T-Mobile application. And the tower itself is a Y, these new Y towers. Tower is a hundred and fifty feet tall to where the normal tower is. And then the extension goes up to, I looked at it earlier, Chris, it's about one, one seventy-nine. One seventy-nine and a half to the top.
Thank you for clarifying that.
No problem. And, uh, our center line for A T and T is a hundred and fifty-seven and a half feet. And I'll zoom in on here. Our antennas will be located on a, on a platform that's attached to this existing pole. Now it's existing, and, uh, there'll be twelve antennas that are attached to that pole. The installation will be exactly like the previous one. It won't, uh, require potable water, sewer. It is, uh, an unmanned facility. Therefore, the traffic won't be increased. Right now, it's once every four to six weeks, a, uh, maintenance person, uh, or technician for A T and T will visit the site to check on the equipment, make sure everything's working properly. That won't increase. It's not located within any wetlands or, uh, flooding area. And the the, uh, limited disturbance is the areas shown here on the compound and the, the, um, conduit path to power this site.
Now, you heard me, uh, represent to the board during the introduction that the additional height being proposed is a real function of P S E G requirements. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, so I, um, reached out to P S E G. Obviously, this was, uh, built for co-location. We already have, uh, not two carriers on here, P S E G. Determined to build it at the height it is to accommodate a third co-locator. Uh, there's room in the compound for a, another co-locator, say Dish Network or Verizon, if, if it be, or someone in the future. And there's a position at the top of the tower to put a, another uh, carrier or co-locator if, if needed, which would negate the need for a new tower in the area.
So, but again, for A T and T's purposes, we can't go lower than what's being shown on these plates.
No, the, the lowest we could go would be all the way down here on, on, on the, uh, stem of this tower, which is only about seventy-five feet. And that wouldn't work for, uh, T-Mobile, uh, A T and T's installation. It wouldn't work for their design. It wouldn't even clear the trees. And it would create safety hazards for P S E G for their client, for their climbers when they're climbing the site. And P S E G doesn't allow antennas to be located below the, uh, their transmission lines.
Okay. Um, in terms of structural, the project will meet all structural code requirements?
Correct. There was a structural analysis performed, and, uh, it meets all local and national code requirements.
And in terms of access, you mentioned before, it'll just be a car that will be driving to, through the existing access road to get to this new, um, area?
Correct. It would just use the existing access that is currently being used by the technicians who were going to the previous site.
So no change in any kind of like landscaping around the sides of the property? It's all the existing driveway?
Correct.
Um, and again, I think as everyone knows, P S E G doesn't allow landscaping in underneath these poles. Correct?
Correct. That is correct.
We can't plant any trees here. Uh, additionally, in terms of lighting, uh, will the equip, no lighting on the pole itself? Um, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
And then with respect to the equipment, can you describe any lighting for the equipment?
Uh, some, some lighting on the, uh, outside of the WIC for the technician if he has to visit it at night, the, the walk-in cabinet. Uh, just some normal flood, flood lighting that you see on any type of, uh, shelter application.
And it's just pointed, directed downward, has automatic shut-off timer on it?
That is correct.
So that it won't have any kind of negative impact on any of our neighbors?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, I have no further questions, uh, from Mr. Chikales.
Does our planner have any questions of their, uh, witness?
I, I don't. Thank you.
Board member, you can, you can take down showing your screen now.
Oh.
I think everybody has, uh, um, any board member have questions for their witness? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, you just said that there'll be no lighting on the pole. I'm not sure of the regulations. Um, I know if you go above a certain height, you have to have a red flashing light for planes. Are we at that limit?
That's one hundred and ninety-nine feet. Once you go over one hundred and ninety-nine feet, then you have to light the, the pole. We are not at a hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay, would we be with the additional add-ons? I know that's not part of this application, but is that something that we should just keep an eye on for future? You said that there's a potential add-on later on.
Well, the, the tower is already designed with an extra real estate at the top. Or an additional co-locator. It wouldn't need an extension on the top of that pole.
And.
Giving a space for.
Okay, that, fantastic. Um, I like that. Uh, you said that there would be no plantings necessary, um, for this project. Um, I, I drove past it just the other day. Uh, I noticed that the ground was kind of bare. It's not a problem. It's part of the construction. Would any kind of, uh, shrubbery or, or grasses or something to keep the hill from eroding and becoming a, uh, a, a water damage, uh, down the hill?
That is not part of this application. I, uh, part of what, what we're proposing won't increase any runoff, so that wasn't addressed in, in this sign?
It's, it's something. Is P S E G responsible for that? Not you, right?
Yes, that's P S E G. They've been, um, restoring that area after the construction. So if you notice, it has like quite a bit of additional, uh, materials they've laid down, the, 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 the rocks are new from what, from the construction. They have been restoring that area from what we've seen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. I appreciate it. Those are the questions I have.
Anybody else? Gary, you have one?
Yeah, I have one. Um, all right. There's a, only one, is there, are other phone companies or other telecommunications companies going to be able to install things after you install yours?
Yes, uh, T-Mobile is going to be installing their equipment as well. That's at the same time, there are the next application. They're actually, their application is what's proposing the compound and, uh, the, the new facility at the, at the base. A T T's actually just co-location, co-locating within that compound.
So then. So it's designed for, right now, it's designed for A T and T and T-Mobile, plus there's space for one more carrier.
Correct.
Which could be anybody. Could be the county, could be anyone.
Yeah, it's not our, it's not for us to dictate.
So it's a first-come, first-served kind of situation? Meaning, you know, if, uh, three more carriers wanted to install, uh, there, they wouldn't be able to because you're already there?
Uh, typically, I mean, it's the same like any kind of commercial real estate application. If some, if a tenant's occupying space, whoever is, whatever tenant goes to that space first would be, uh, have least rights to that. But again, it's not involving A T T. It's, it's purely involves P S E G.
Right. And you're agreement with them, right?
Yes, yeah. So our agreement is to allow A T to use five hundred square feet at the base for the equipment and then antennas of that one height.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions from board members?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there a generator proposed or any signage?
There is no generator proposed, and the only signage that will be proposed is what's required by P S E G, which is, uh, a warning sign to use, to wear safety equipment. A uh, eighteen, A T and T has a, uh, site information sign, which tells, it's like, if, if there's an emergency at, at the site, that they have a number to call, what the site number is. And they can give that information to the, the person that, I get the knock that they're calling. And, uh, a warning sign for note, for private property and no trespassing.
Gotcha.
And, and any signs that are required by the, the, the F A, the FCC, sorry.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other board members' questions? See, uh, Mike, you have a question? No, okay. I thought I saw your hand up there. Okay, sorry. Um, okay, do we have any public, uh, that would like to ask questions of, uh, their, of their witness?
Okay, Mr. Larry Fast.
Okay, Mr. Fast, would you like to ask a question of their witness, please?
Just, please also give me your address before you ask.
Yeah, would you, yeah, state your full name and address, please.
Sure, it's Larry Fast. Lawrence Fast is the legal name, F A S T. The address is four ninety-eight Long Hill Road.
And we remember, these are just questions now, not testimony.
I understand. I have, I, I do have some other statements for later, much later in this process, but I do have a few here. Um, there's a question. I, I've been having a look at the FCC's Tower and Antenna Sighting Guidelines, which is a fairly, um, comprehensive document. Um, there are other considerations in this region, since we've got a conservation zone surrounded by residential zone in, um, a fairly sensitive environmental and historic area. Um, who of, on this team was responsible for A T and T for meeting some of those requirements? The section one oh six historic, uh, reports, anything having to do with, um, the environmental considerations, not just water runoff, but the, the larger ones, and particularly since we have both the, um, the Great Swamp, which is covered by the Great Swamp, um, Act of nineteen sixty-eight, which created this sensitive area where the ten towns in the watershed surrounding the swamp have maintained design standards that are a bit, um, more strict for environmental.
Hold on, Larry.
Is any of that working in here?
What is your question?
The question is, who was responsible for checking those out? I know there was a section one oh six request received by the county. I'm not aware of any of the others, so I'm asking, were they, was A T and T responsible for that, the engineering firm? Who was supposed to bring that into the, before moving forward on this? Visual impact statements, that sort of thing.
Um.
Mr. Chikales, do you have that information?
Yeah, I know that, uh, T-Mobile did a, uh, photo simulation that they're, they're gonna pr, present. I'm not sure about the question, though.
So in other words, whatever Mr. Fast is asking may be covered by T-Mobile, is what you're saying?
Yeah, because we're coming in as a co-location. So.
Okay.
Actually doing the, the, uh, application for the, for the compound at the base.
So you basically sort of secondary to T-Mobile's priority in this, uh, in this project on top of P S E N G?
There, yeah, T-Mobile's coming in the initial, they're proposing everything first, and then co, and A T and T is coming in secondary.
Okay. Because I saw some of them.
It was, and additionally, P S E G is the one that installed the tower. Correct?
Yeah. Right, that's.
As well as the extension on top of the tower.
Yeah, that's all, that is all P S E G's, uh, asset.
So that comes entirely under P S E N G. You're not, you don't own any part of that, um, the mast extension for cellular use. That, even though it's not really for power transmission. That's.
Correct.
From, okay. That's as I thought it was. I just have one or two more. Um, can we go back to a couple of things about the lights and, and so on, on? Um, when you were talking about the lights on the WIC, that was something that would not be on, on a regular basis, only during service?
That is correct. It'll be on timer only when, uh, nighttime, when a technician needs to use them to walk around the facility.
So normally, hopefully at nighttime, we'll be looking at dark woods back there, and there won't be any disturbances to to any, any surrounding properties from lights. Um, how about things like cooling fans? Are they in the cabinetry?
There, there are HVACs, some wall, wall-mounted HVACs that are attached to cool the equipment on the inside.
And do we know what the decibel level will be on something like that again, and it kind of trying to maintain a wilderness feel along the right-of-way here, but.
Uh, the previous installation had the same type of installation. I wouldn't increase what was there previously. I can get that information. I don't have it all.
No, I don't comply with all noise standards. We'll make sure it complies with all noise standards.
Correct, yes.
And, um, as I think, you already answered, no generators on site, correct?
Correct.
Even in power failure mode. How about, um, video sur, surveillance of your part of the compound or any of the compound? Will there be any kind of real-time video streaming or anything?
No, no video streaming, no, no cameras.
Excellent. That was more of a privacy issue for the surrounding properties. And, um, I think for now, for, that's really the only questions that I, I've got that are germane to what your testimony is right now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Larry. Any other public questions?
Members of the.
Members of the public, if you have questions, you need to raise your hand. Going once? Moving on.
Hi, Mr. Quinn, your next witness.
Thank you. I'll call Mr. Penesso here. He's our rated frequency engineer.
Okay, swear him in, please.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God. You're on mute, but I did see you mouth it.
Take yourself off mute, please.
You're good, thank you.
And what is your?
My first name is Daniel, last name is Penesso, P E N E S S O. Address is fifteen East Midland Avenue, Paramus, New Jersey. I have a Bachelor of Science in Electronic Engineering, and I've been employed as a radio frequency engineer for over twenty-three years. And I have testified throughout the state of New Jersey as well as New York with regards to design and implementation of wireless networks, such as what's being proposed before the board tonight. And I have been accepted as an expert witness in that.
In that area, and you have a current New Jersey license?
Radio frequency engineers do not have licenses.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't know that, okay. All right, thank you.
Number of times before.
Yeah, that's fine.
Last week in Berkeley Heights.
Radio engineer.
Mr. Penesso, you described, I guess, what I wanted you to just go over is the applicant does need a facility here in order to provide service, reliable service to the community, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And I understand back in two thousand and three, they went through this whole process in terms of deeming this use appropriate for this property and these utility structures, and that was all discussed then, but still, at this point in time, antenna facility is still required here in this location in order to provide service to the community.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, can you, do you have any exhibits that you have that you can demonstrate this?
Yes, I can share the screen.
Now, this, I don't think the board has, so I'll ask you to mark this exhibit as we go along, okay?
Okay, so I'm bringing up, I'm gonna share my screen. What you see here is a label.
Let before that, let, let us mark this.
Yeah, is this a compendium or is it just one page?
There, no, there's many, there's, I have three pages.
Okay.
One consisting of three pages.
Yeah. Or actually four, if we want to show the, because I can show the temp site.
A one consisting of four pages.
Yes.
Is there, is there a name for this document?
These are propagation maps called them propagation maps.
Uh, propagation, P R O.
Propagation, okay.
Propagation, yes.
Okay, now, what did you use to generate this, Dan?
So what, the tool that's used to generate this is an industry standard tool called ATOL, which is tuned to actual drive test data, which gives the results of with the actual coverages for all of the sites. When you have the site information input, the lat long and the heights, and the antenna azimuths. It includes the topography and morphology of the area, so that we get an accurate representation of what the coverage is for those sites. What you see here is an exhibit which depicts A T and T's on air sites that are the purple dots on the map. And the colors that you see represent the blue, purplish blue represents reliable in building coverage. And the green represents reliable in vehicle coverage. And this exhibit is labeled map number one, A T and T neighboring coverage. So this is the coverage that's being provided by the existing on air sites without the temp site or without the permanent site. So you can see the star approximately in the center is the proposed location of the P S E and G structure that we would be collocating on. And the area that we're trying to cover is along Long Hill Road as well as what was mentioned, the Great Swamp National Wildlife Refuge Park. We also have Longview Terrace, Myersville Road, Hickory Tavern Road, New Vernon Road, which goes north and south. So all of this area, I'll bring up another exhibit, is what we're, what we, why we need to have this site, so that we can have the interconnectivity that we had before from the prior location that we were collocated on to, to fill within our network, with A T and T's network.
Okay.
Up, sharing screen. Up another exhibit.
Is this still part of A one?
Yes, these are all the, of the four pages.
What, what page is this?
This is, this is map number two, and it's labeled A T and T proposed composite coverage. And this is what the coverage would look like if this site were approved and integrated into A T and T's network. And as you see, I'll try, the area that was all white, that was unreliable, now has reliable coverage. And this is why we need to have this site, so that we can hand off, as you can see, the sites to the north, to the west, northwest of our proposed, as well as to the northeast of the proposed site. We have that connectivity, so we cover White Bridge Road, New Vernon Road, Long Hill Road, all the roads that I mentioned would have coverage and that can, we have the interconnectivity between the existing on air sites.
Plus, it'll serve anyone that's living in that vicinity better to enhance their service, as well as anyone that's at the Great Swamp, correct?
Correct, and also.
Summer falls while hiking, they can have a phone to get help.
Correct, and also, A T and T was awarded by the First Responders Network Authority to implement within the seven hundred megahertz frequency band, a nationwide network for first responders. So that if ever there were an emergency, the seven hundred megahertz block of frequency would be dedicated only to first responders and not public use. Because during an emergency, wireless networks get bogged down with a lot of usage, and this would be dedicated whole, solely for the first responders, so that it would have interoperability between the municipality and other municipalities, as well as other states. So this is another added benefit to, and this is within A T and T's network only, but it's an added benefit to all, it's implemented on all existing sites as well as new sites that are being built.
Okay, and in terms of emissions? Does it all under the federal and state standards for emissions?
Yes, this, this site, the combination of both proposed carriers, A T and T and T-Mobile, the combination of both antenna operations is two point two percent of the F C C general population maximum permissible exposure limit. So it's well below the one hundred percent reference for compliance. And it's forty-five times below the limit established as safe for continuous human exposure to RF emissions from antennas. And the New Jersey guideline is five times less stringent, so for this case, it's a factor of two hundred and twenty-five times below. So it's well within the guidelines, well below. And that reason is because the antennas are so high, they're mounted, you know, so high from the ground.
And in terms of maintenance, is anything else, nothing's gonna change what was there before, correct? Standard maintenance, once per month?
Correct, and this is up, yes, as was stated by Peter, this is monitored remotely back to the Network Operations Center. If there is an emergency, there are no alarms, audible alarms, a sil alarm would go to the Network Operations Center, and then someone would be dispatched.
Okay, and again, we're not, your coverage purposes wasn't the driving force behind the additional height being proposed here. However, the network does improve, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the site is needed for A T and T's network to provide service in the northern portion of Long.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Penesso.
Any questions from board members of this witness? No. Any members of the public wish to ask this witness questions?
Okay, Mr. Fast.
Go ahead, Larry.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, you knew I'd have a question or two. Not too much here. Could you, I'm sorry, Mr. Engineer. Could you clarify the, the two point two percent safety standard? Just that is for twenty-four hours a day, seven day a week, continuous exposure, is that two point two percent?
That's correct, yes, yes.
And then, of course, that's at the, the height of the tower. What's the, the nearest recommended residence, occupied residence to something like that? How many feet away would that be? And I'm sure it's dependent on the height, but.
Oh, you mean what the highest, yes, I can tell you.
Yeah, I mean.
So the two point two percent, the highest, that's the highest incident, and that was at two hundred and twenty feet from the tower. So even at the highest incident, we're still at two point two percent. Every, anywhere else is below that. And as you get further and further away from the antennas, it's even less.
I'm sure, I'm kind of in a related field, so I'm very familiar with inverse square law, but were measurements taken of the residents that are adjacent to the tower to know what the actual closest are, because I know, but my house is one of the closest, and there may be others on Longview Terrace and some of my neighbors theoretically would be even closer, and I just haven't seen what those distances are to know.
Right, as I stated, anything closer is less than two point two, anything further is less than two point two. Because of the vertical antenna pattern, the hot, as the antenna pattern leaves this, the antenna, that vertical antenna pattern for the combination of both A T and T and T-Mobile, the highest incident is only two point two percent at two hundred and twenty feet. Anywhere else, it's less than that. Closer, it's less, and further away, it's less. And that has to do with the antenna pattern itself.
The worst case calculation, correct?
It's a worst case calculation, correct, yes.
And we're, just another, this is maybe perhaps a more general question, we're pretty far down the road on this construction at this point. But were there any alternate options to get that same coverage using two sites on lower towers in less visually impactful places, were they ever considered?
There are, currently, A T and T is on all the existing structures in the area. And we would have to construct a new structure to provide a level of covers that we are provide, gonna get provided if we are approved on this P S E and G structure.
So this was.
So A T and T's network has been, has had a facility here since two thousand and three, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And then it built its network around that coverage.
That's correct. So any existing structure we are currently on, and in order for, to fulfill this gap in coverage that exists, we would either need to collocate on this P S E and G structure, or build a new monopole in this immediate vicinity.
So the expediency of the new P S E and G tower really overweight, overrode nearly any other option at this point.
It, it wasn't the expediency of the P S E and G, P S E and G required that A T and T and T-Mobile will remove their antennas that was previously approved as part of their upgrade project. And the plan as part of their upgrade project was for them to always go back to this, to the, the new towers. That's what was discussed in the July meeting for A T and T, that was discussed in the March meeting for T-Mobile. That was, that was what was designed and that was what was being implemented right now. But again, in the past, since two thousand and three, when A T and T was approved here, any subsequent site was designed around this site, which was on air in Long Hill, correct, Dan?
Correct.
Good, and just one further one related to that. What lifetime do you see for this equipment? Do you see this RF technology as it's coming in now? Being around for another decade or two? Do you see other alternate technologies replacing this for A T and T's network?
This is being designed with the current standards, long-term evolution, and I don't foresee anything in the immediate future that would change this type of installation. Right now, it's being, as I stated, it's, we are implementing it with the latest antenna models, as well as operate within all our licensed frequency bands, and I don't foresee anything meaning that this, that we would not be utilizing this structure in the future.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I've got right now.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Be back to you.
Okay, any other members of the public?
Anyone, anyone, members of the public?
Going once? Going twice? Done.
Moving on.
All right, Mr. Quinn, any other witnesses?
Yes, Mr. Ricky's our planner.
I see that. Would you please swear him in?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Thank you, and if you just be qualified.
Yeah, please state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Ricky, R I C C I, one seven seven Monmouth Avenue, Atlantic Islands, New Jersey.
And you are a licensed planner?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner. I've been licensed since the year two thousand. Also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master's degree in city regional planning, which I received from Rutgers University in nineteen ninety-seven. I'm a municipal planning consultant to five communities. I testify regularly in front of boards, I have testified in front of Long Hill on a shop rate application a few years back. And I've been qualified in over two hundred towns.
We deem you qualified.
Hey, Mr. Ricky, and I'd ask you to describe the project, any variances, and your opinion with respect to various of your requests as part of this application. Yes, we're seeking that the D one, or excuse me, the D six height variance, made a height, maximum height of a hundred and sixty-one feet on a tower that was previously a hundred and thirty-three feet. I know that the board has, and it was discussed by Mr. Quinn, as previously found that this site was appropriate for a D one use variance, and the facility was located here for, for over a decade. So that really, I'm gonna briefly discuss the benefits of wireless communications that are typically under a D one use variance, very briefly. But it's my opinion that the focus of our, of our burden is to show that the site has the ability to accommodate the problems associated with the increased height, and that, as with all variances, so that these variances can be granted without a substantial detriment to the, to the public and your, in your zone plan. With that said, I, I think the board's probably heard many of these applications. These facilities promote the general welfare generally to the issuance of an F C C license. I think we all recognize that the benefits of these facilities, they give us, provide for E nine one one service, family communications, access to proper reliable information. I note that over eighty percent of all E nine one one calls occur from wireless phones. And we heard from Mr. Penesso about the first net facility that would operate on this facility that would give access to first responders. So the public interest associated with these facilities is pretty grand and significant. I think, I believe the site continues to be particularly well suited at this location. We heard from Mr. Penesso that this facility is at the right location and height to eliminate the gap in the service area. Excuse me. Here, we are replacing an existing facility consistent with the utility providers replacement of the utility tower. You've heard that at length. If that wasn't the case, there would continue to be a facility here, and this is something that we know that A T and T has planned its neck, network around this facility for many years. This facility continues to be in A T and T's search ring, and as a planner, when we co-locate on an existing structure, it's the most desirous way of providing coverage, because it's the least intrusive means of providing coverage to the area, reason being, otherwise, a new tower or structure would have to be constructed. So for, for all those reasons, this site continues to be particularly well suited. Regarding the ability of the site to accommodate the increased height, I believe that the board should review this application in respect to the environs that it's located. Here we are on a non-residential site within a hundred and fifty foot wide P S E and G utility easement that's providing electric transmission power to residents. Similarly speaking, this facility would provide wireless coverage to those residents as well. And you've also heard from, from Mr. Penesso that these facilities, the height and, and the, for the ability for these facilities to actually operate and work is intrinsically tied to the height. And without that height, there is not a use. Without the height, service cannot be provided, and the system would not be unusable, would be usable, excuse me. So here, the height is necessary to effectuate the use. It's well settled from the landmark smart case, when the height is necessary to effectuate the use, it becomes a special reason warranting that height variance relief. And here, while the height is increasing, it's increasing by, for this facility approximately. And here, while the height is increasing, it's increasing by, for this facility approximately thirty feet. And again, that's dictated by the replacement of the tower. So in this regard, I just note one more time. We're co-locating on a hundred and fifty-foot tall transmission tower. The heights needed to provide service. The physical ability to locate the antenna at a lower level, we've heard from the site engineer, that that does not, that's not permissible under PSENG standards. And where it potentially could be located would not at work to effectuate the use due to the surrounding vegetation in the area. So this continues to be the least intrusive means to provide coverage to the area. And I just note that in the landmark case, it actually resulted in the elimination of a ninety-foot tower with a hundred and forty-foot tower adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And the court found that to be merely a fifty-foot increase in height. So this this application, in my opinion, continues to result in sound land use planning. Regarding the negative criteria, relying on the Sika four-part balancing test that asks us to balance the benefits of an application versus the detriments. The first part of the test asks us to identify the public interest. And I I think I've already partially mentioned that. Access to proper liable information, the ability to make E nine one one calls and the like. The second part of the test asks us the negative impacts associated with these facilities. And I know this is in a conservation zone, but this is a passive use. This is a use that does not increase traffic, with the exception of a a monthly or bi-monthly maintenance visit, doesn't increase population demand on sanitary sewer service and the like. So it's a use that fits very well in a conservation area of a community. The only potential negative impacts associated with these facilities are their visibility. And that's in the context of a hundred and fifty-wide utility right-of-way with an existing or hundred and fifty-foot tall tower. Here, it's, what we're talking about is antenna on an existing tower that will be viewed from a significant distance. So when we look at the the benefits versus the detriments, the the detriments are are minor. Extremely localized and and minimal in terms of visibility in my context. The third part of the test that I kind of skipped over is, can we mitigate the negative impact associated with our request? And here, I think there's very limited opportunities due to the fact that we are on a transmission tower. PSENG heavily controls these rights of ways and what can we done? And and since the, I don't want to call it an intrusion, but the the placement of the antenna are relatively minor in nature, as a planner, I can't think of anything that could be done to further mitigate the placement of those antenna. And then finally, as I mentioned, the fourth part of the test asks us to balance the benefits versus the detriments. But I think I clearly shown that there's significant benefits associated with these facilities. And the detriments are are minor and and only potentially visible. So I believe this is a strong application for a D six height.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Does our planner have any questions of their planner?
I don't.
Okay. Board members, any questions of their planner? No, okay. Members of the public, any questions of their planner?
Mr. Fast.
Welcome back.
I'm back and I'm going to lean back on some precedent that we had from the earlier installations. And I understand exactly what Mr. Ricky is saying about the mitigation. And of course, I understand the offsets. It's a visual. It really is a visual impact on on at least the surrounding neighborhood and in the the view sheds from the distance because it's so high up on the hill. However, let's take it back to the, on the more local issue, the surrounding properties. In the agreement on, in two thousand and four, there was going to be a hundred and fifty-feet linear vegetation that was going to be installed. Of course, it never really happened, but it showed some very good faith on AT&amp;T's part at that time to at least acknowledge and try to find something, find some kind of solution. Since we do have the immediate neighborhood and it's a hilly area, which means that selective landscaping can can't get rid of the the height of the tower, but it can certainly mitigate and improve the nature of sightlines are trapped by evergreen trees and other things. Is there any consideration going back to the type of solutions that were offered back in two thousand and four to do landscaping? Maybe it would be an allotment on private properties rather than in the right-of-way because those rules have gotten stricter over the years, I understand, with PSENG. But you've got a lot of neighbors that are co-located with you.
I was not part of the the application in in two thousand and four. Are you suggesting that AT&amp;T did not plant its landscaping consistent with that previous approval? Is that what you said? I wasn't clear about that.
Yeah, I, it's not there, it hasn't been there for years. I think some of it might have gone in and then was not maintained. There were certain, there was a two-year guarantee on it at one point. It's in the packet that was part of this application as the history because I I didn't have to go and dig out my old files. It's very specific down to the exact types of plants and how many linear feet would be planted and so on. So I'm not asking for a replication of that, but just a more broad concept of would AT&amp;T be willing to try and help the neighborhood out, those of us most directly impacted by the visual intrusions here?
So AT&amp;T, so in terms of the landscaping, it was AT&amp;T did not pull landscaping down. PSENG in the past ten to twelve years has updated its policies regarding landscaping. And now, across all its right-of-ways goes and will remove landscaping that deans possibly could interfere with right-of-way operations. So if you look up and down a number of different right-of-ways, Chatham, Long Hill, Bridgewater, Warren, Watchong, throughout the area, you'll see that a number of the landscape, unfortunately, has been removed by the utility company as part of their process and procedures. It had no do with AT&amp;T. So whatever AT&amp;T had proposed before, it's not there anymore. It's not able to do, but it wasn't on AT&amp;T. It was pretty much on the utility company's maintenance plan. So and also, we're not allowed to permit, the utility company will not allow us, as Mr. Chikala mentioned before, that landscaping is not allowed on this property for PSE requirements. We're not allowed to buffer the area anymore. So what is being done is a proposed perma hedge around the compound that will mitigate the visual impact of the actual equipment. So you'll have that green instead of the actual landscape. So that's what's being proposed.
Yeah, I didn't, I, Mr. Quinn and Chairman, I didn't want to get into the perma hedge and all of the compound yet since that appears to be T-Mobile's purview. But just again, it was just to bring it up that is there, there is no, than any consideration that for the dozen or so most impacted properties that are going to see the the strongest visual detriment to their their layouts. That any kind of aid or allotment on, not on public services land, but on the adjacent properties for screening. And we've already had public service come onto our private properties and thin out what they felt was hazardous. It's been very contentious with that. So we've lost trees just through pruning. We're still trying to buffer because buffering is probably the only feasible mitigation approach to any of this. And, you know, so I'm sort of imploring you to see if there's a way that we can find some way of working with planners to make that work.
Larry, just to let you know, the board cannot mandate that an applicant put anything on someone else's property. That is up to the private landowners. We cannot mandate that because that would be mandating something that we can't control. So if if ATT, PSENG, T-Mobile, anyone else want to knock on doors and say, can we plant a tree in your in your backyard? That's up to them. We can't, we can't mandate that.
The two thousand, I understand that, Mr. Chairman. The two thousand and four agreement, I think, was something that was agreed to, but it was because it was on public services property?
Uh, yeah, it was not on private property. I'll tell you that right now. The only thing I see on that.
No, they weren't.
The only thing I see on that was a hundred and fifty-foot long buffer planted with the center of the buffer to match the center of the proposed ground cabinets. That was just buffering of the ground cabinets.
Correct.
Uh, the planning should be.
Trying to mitigate that.
Yeah, I don't see anything else. I mean, unless you have a page and line you'd like to tell me, but.
No, no.
Unfortunately, that's something we've seen across the board. I've been in front of so many towns on these towers where AT&amp;T's come back and and either had to modify or say, and unfortunately, we we hear this a lot, that, you know.
From what I understand now, PSENG is a lot more strict on what they have planted there. They don't want any plant, basically.
Exactly.
That's correct.
Can't impose things upon an applicant that their quote-unquote landlord won't let them do. So it's not within our our power.
No, I'm aware of that. And I'm just throwing it out there to see what the these various utilities will do to be good neighbors in in some way.
But as I said.
The only form for.
I understand. If they wish to do something with the private landowner and PSENG agrees to it, that's fine, but that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Exactly. I mean, a lot of this would probably not even concern PSENG. It should be far enough away from their wireline that it wouldn't present any hazard. We're looking for other solutions, visual.
I understand, but you just said they came on people's property and cut trees, so.
They did.
I don't know. I I'm not here to read their minds. I don't know what.
No, and I'm not here to. I understand. I'm not really here to litigate any grievances over the last twenty years with PSENG. We're looking for forward-thinking solutions for how can we maintain these neighborhoods that still look good visually and the AT&amp;T and T-Mobile can get the coverage that they need from this very high antenna?
I understand that, but I think that I've I've expressed to you that we is not within our jurisdiction to mandate somebody else's private properties, plantings, or a relationship between the applicant and a private property owner. We can't do that.
I understand.
But I do appreciate you mentioning it. And if ATT or T-Mobile or or PSENG wish to do it, more power to them.
Good. Well, it's considered on the table for any of our friendly utilities to pick that up and run with it.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
That's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public members? Members of the public?
See. Okay, uh, here we go.
Who?
All right, Arlene Ralphko, I believe, Ralph Ralphel.
Ralphalco.
Ralphalco.
Ralphalco, thank you.
All right.
Can you just give us your address?
Yes.
Uh, thirty-three Hickory Turpin. Thank you.
Do you have a question for their planner?
Yeah, was there any consideration to, uh, are there, are there any poles that are not adjacent to properties? To houses that could have been considered to put these additional antenna on?
No, I mean, if you look up and down, I mean, you're familiar with the area. If you look up and down this right-of-way, you can look right down Long Hill, Hill Road and see the towers go down. Everything is around in that homes. Every tower around here is turning on its homes until you get to the bottom of the hill. And there's already other antennas from other, the neighboring side, so it's too far away.
So again. Just to let your, just to let your planner respond. Is there anything, are there any towers that are not more or less adjacent to housing or buildings?
I I don't know of any, and we heard from Mr. Praneso as well regarding alternative sites and existing structures. There are, there are none, so to suggest another location, we'll be suggesting placing it adjacent to, I guess, residences somewhere else. From a planning standpoint, this is the site that's historically had the facility.
So this is the site that is closest to the tower that had been locate, occupied by by the antennas, correct?
Yes. So it's the, it's the site least likely to result in new negative impacts for that reason as well.
And these, and these towers, and these antennas are higher, so they'd be even harder to see unless you look higher, right?
Um, they're, they would be further away and just, I think by default, something's further away from you is more difficult to see. You'll still see it, but it will be, it'll appear slightly smaller to the eye, I agree.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Any other members in the public?
Members of the public? Going once? Going twice?
Twice, gone. All right, before we, do you have any other witnesses besides?
No, that's two center of our direct testimony.
Are there any questions from any of our board members directed to any of the witnesses that you've heard, that you might have, that you may have wanted to ask that you didn't think of before?
Oh, actually, I want, I'm sorry, if nobody else does.
Okay.
Okay, when will the temporary tower be removed? Is that within your purview or is that T-Mobile?
So T-Mobile owns the temporary tower. PSENG requires that the temporary tower be removed prior to its energizing the the new transmission lines. So right now, that's slated for the beginning of March. So the temporary tower will have to be removed no later than the end of the month. So they will not allow ATT or T-Mobile to have that temporary tower up on air once the lines are energized.
Okay, so it will definitely be removed within a year, say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Everything is planned for this spring.
Dave Jonathan. We can't hear you.
Hello, my, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I know we, you've been here before, but can you remind me, how tall is the temporary tower? And how high up is your, are your antenna on the the temporary tower now?
I believe the temporary tower antennas are a hundred feet high.
Okay, I I only ask that because I know that I believe Mr. Praneso testified to, or I think, or maybe it was Mr. Chikala's that the only other place on the, on the new pole to put something would be, I guess, you can't put it on the angular part. You'd have to put it on the base part. Now, and I understand PSENG doesn't want it there, but how high was that, the top of the base?
The the usable spot on the stem, the base of the tech or would be about seventy-five feet.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Mr. Quinn, would you like to sum up or give us any other information?
Sure, again, I'd just be very briefly. Again, we're here because of the direction of the board. We had to come back to seek approval and just to confirm, to make sure everything was in place for the permanent site. That was a condition of our temporary application. Again, this is the use that's been here for, I did confirm, two thousand and three was when this was approved. So we're going on eighteen years that there's been service to the community being provided in this location. You've heard Tesla about how this is still needed. Again, it's not a project that AT&amp;T wanted to do. It's not one where AT&amp;T is trying to change anything at all. In fact, they would have kept the site on air and and a number of other ones that are up and down the this right-of-way line, but it's a situation that PSENG has dictated. I think the reason why is, again, to benefit the utility lines and to give additional capacity, which hopefully means we don't get power outages in the summertime, like we sometimes have done in the storms we've had too, especially over this past summer. But so we're just having to adjust to that. So this is the application we have is the minimum height ATT is operating at, which PSENG will let it operate at in order to be safe from its employees and for its operations and still function for its network. And because of that, we're seeking the additional height variance. So again, it's a use that's been there for close to two decades. Its antennas are going taller because of PSENG requirements. It's being shifted, maybe, you know, very slightly to the north because of the location of the pole. But otherwise than that, this is a use that's been here for a number of years. So we're respectfully request the board approve this application.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that want to make a comment about this application prior to the board delivering? We can't hear you, Deborah. You muted yourself.
Sorry about that. I had an issue. Any, anyone, ever, any members of the public with comments? Going once? Going twice?
Gone. Right, Jonathan, would you like to start the deliberation?
Or if I can be heard, then.
Yes, you can.
All right, I want to thank them, the applicant, for coming before us tonight. I think that because this site is basically the exact same site that the AT&amp;T was on prior, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile both were on prior to Ashley. um, AT&T was on prior, AT&T and T-Mobile both were on prior to actually uh, the poll bring taking the prior poll being taken down by PSENG kind of shows that this was a suitable site previously and now continues to be a suitable site. And they believe the applicant has shown that without the site uh available, that the service would be inadequate. Um, and I think they've also shown that there's really no alternative viable site in this area that would provide the same amount of service. Um, I I don't think they've, I think they've shown that it's won't impair the public good uh, any more than the prior um, you know, poll that was there um previously. I understand it's a little higher. Um, and that the neighbors probably would prefer that they don't have any PSENG uh, tower there, but you know, that's not the world we're living in unfortunately right now. So I would be supportive of this. I would be supportive of this proposal.
Thank you.
This application.
Mike, would you like to continue?
I agree with what was previously said. This is kind of almost a replacement in kind of sorts. Um, there's really no other viable alternative on where to put it. Positives, that way the negatives kind of will be in favor of this application.
Thank you. Gary?
Uh, I'd agree with uh the other board members and how they described uh that there doesn't seem to be any reason why we shouldn't approve something that had previously been there. I would just add uh that I don't appreciate the look of it very much, but it is what it is.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes, I I don't see any problem with this. Um, it's been there before. We're going into modern times, getting rid of old stuff and putting up new improved areas. And it's just a little bit taller. I don't see any problem.
Tom?
Uh, I'll echo what Gary said. It's not pretty, but it's functional. Uh, it's a need that uh is presented before us. Uh, I don't know that we really legally can even tell them no, but we can help them guide and we we did. And um, I I do take into consideration Mr. Fast's um re- request for a shrubbery being built uh built, installed uh on their property, but they have no obligation to do so. Um, Mr. Fast can do that on his own. Sorry, Larry. Um, and I believe I'll be in favor of this.
Thank you. Joe?
Um, I agree with what's said. Uh, there's no new negative impact for the um uh cellphone towers and signal. Um, I also don't appreciate the look of the new uh PSENG poles, as now I see it from my house and I didn't before, but um from this perspective, it'd be in favor.
Thank you. I I too agree that uh, you know, PSENG caused this issue and they saw fit to change their uh polls uh due to uh technology having progressed and and the increase in demand. And uh both uh the ATT applicant and the second the next app we're gonna are really really being stuck with having to put their antenna where they're told. Uh, it's similar to close in position to where it was as far as the the uh antenna, as far as the pole is. And I believe the actual height is actually an advantage because it's higher up. You won't see it as much. It won't be as in the eyesight. You'll have to raise your head higher to look at it uh other than the pole being ugly, but that really isn't our purview. Uh, yeah, I don't think the antennas are going to be anymore in the sight of anyone that's, you know, driving by or in their house. It's anymore to any extent that it was, and I don't think there is the the negative, I think, is is outweighed. The the negative uh is downplayed and the positive outweighs it as to coverage and the fact that we're getting uh uh a better use of the area, better use of the antenna this way. So I would I too would be in favor of it. Uh, Amanda, would you like to give us a resolution?
Uh, assuming the board is inclined to grant this, this would be a motion to grant the application and subject to all of the conditions stipulated to. Actually, I don't think there were any because there was nothing in the memos and there was nothing additional that we added. So it's really just a motion to grant a D six variance for the additional height on these tower, this tower. And that's it. It is a D variance though, so you do need at least five affirmative votes.
Do I have motion to move that that uh? That, okay. Who who moved it?
Mr. Rosenberg.
Okay, thank you. Second, okay. Roll call.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Ms. Robertson?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Very much. Uh, I would ask one one question too, just to go further. Um, I know what the town's policy is with respect to filing for permits at risk here. Um, I know, as I mentioned kind of earlier in the introduction, that we are kind of under the gun to get everything installed prior to the lines being energized. Um, so especially since there's no conditions to our approval, I don't know if the board would have any objection if we file for our zoning permits and building permit in advance of the resolution. I know it might be a couple of weeks, but still it it just lets us make sure everything's done because PCG sometimes can be a challenge.
Yeah, we're gonna try to get that resolution uh finalized uh by the next meeting. Uh.
Well, yeah, Chris, uh, Mr. Quinn, you can definitely um just you can file everything with me.
Yeah.
And um I'll I'll have our construction uh uh technical assistant start start to file because there's no, since there were really no conditions of approval, there's no resolution compliance with either a plant with our planner or you know, so we we can we can get the, give me the five copies. We'll get them signed for you and we'll get everything set up so that as soon as the resolution comes in, I as the zoning officer can sign off and they can start the construction review.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I agree. Appreciate you.
Welcome. All right.
Have a good holiday, everyone.
You too. Hey, guys, you want to take a five-minute break or something? Just a little bathroom break before we start the second one?
That'd be great.
Let's make it ten minutes. Let's make it ten minutes. All right. Make it ten minute break. We'll be right back. You put yourself on uh on on video?
I got lost.
That's.
I I'm in the car. I'll be back on video in like ten minutes.
Okay. All right, uh, the next? Are we uh recording?
Yes.
Well, okay. All right, we are back in session at um what time is it? Nine oh.
Nine oh two.
All right, the next uh variance is a used variance for height block one three nine zero eight. Lot five, one five uh point zero one zone C, PSENG Steel Tower off Long Hill Road. Application number two one dash two two Z, T-Mobile Northeast LLC is the applicant uh present?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chair. Jennifer Canary from Christmuse, our dear minister on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC.
Thank you. Uh, our um uh, where is our play? Our planner is sworn in already. Uh, who are your witnesses?
Um, as I previously just mentioned, it's Petros, Francis Boshalte, and last but not least, Tim Cronk.
Okay, could you swear in there? Uh, well, swear in Petros again for this one and uh and the other two.
Also, indeed, just because it's a new hearing too.
Yeah.
If you could all raise your right hand, do sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Oh, and just for the record, I did review the notice and it was sufficient as to form and content, so and title it is, so we, the board does have jurisdiction to hear this matter.
Thank you. All right, would you might like to make an opening statement?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Thank you. First, I want to um state for the record, I apologize in advance for what is probably going to be a little bit of redundancy, slightly different, but redundant testimony that you heard previously from AT&T. But we have to put um our record in, unfortunately. But we'll try to be as condensed as possible with respect considering the late hour and the board's patience thus far. Um, in this application, T-Mobile Northeast requests approval to reinstall its wireless telecommunications facility part of PSENG Permanent Tower located at lot fifteen point oh one, block one three nine zero eight. That's located at Long Hill Road in the township of Long Hill, New Jersey, totals five acres in the sea conservation zone. Access to the site is from a gravel driveway from Long Hill Road with electric and telco above ground from an onsite pole. T-Mobile is proposing to co-locate at a hundred and sixty-seven foot center line on the extension of the new hundred-foot PSENG Transmission Tower and then to to install an equipment compound at the base of the tower totaling two thousand square feet, which is forty by fifty. T-Mobile had an existing approved and operating facility that was licensed by the FCC but was decommissioned under, as we all know, PSENG's replacement project, which we were and we were previously granted approval for a temp tower during that replacement project. Uh, we also received a zoning permit in December of twenty twenty from your township to co-locate on this tower at a lower height, but due to certain PSENG upper further upgrades on the permanent tower, T-Mobile is before this board seeking relief for the higher height required for the antenna installation as directed per PSENG project improvements. Before we get into the substance of testimony, I'd like to note for the record that this application received in this, I'm sorry, this applicant received initial approval replacement on the initial PSENG tower back in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, and it is the applicant's position that variants his role of land under the well-known Polio case, and there was never an intent to abandon this use, which is why we are before you this evening to continue to operate our wireless facility in this location. The proposal this evening is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval at D six height variance where thirty-five feet is permitted. And a hundred and sixty-seven feet at the center line is proposed for T-Mobile's wireless antennas. I have three witnesses with with me this evening. Petro Shakulas from Mazer Engineering. Ms. Francis Boshette from Pure Con Solutions will be testifying as the RF consultant. And last but not least, Mr. Tim Concord, who will be testifying in his capacity as a professional engineer. Planner, I'm sorry. A few housekeeping items, we received the Township Engineers Report dated November fifth, as well as the Township Planner's Report dated November sixteen. I don't believe there's any other reports, but I'd just like to confirm that for the record.
I I don't know of any others.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. There's nothing further from the board. I can put up my first witness.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, Petros, how are you?
I'm doing well.
You're up again.
All right, well, since I already pre-qualified you for the last one, you are an expert for this one.
Thank you.
Well, I just one question. Your license is in good standing, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I I asked him that before, so.
I I was, I apologize. I had a hearing with one of us, so I jumped on late.
All right, let's do this right again. Cute. Thanks. I know. These kids, these poor kids nowadays.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, um, do you want me to go through it again, or do you do you want me to go and just do some of the changes and the differences between the AT&T?
Why don't you just do the differences? Because we are, you know, I mean, we know the similarities. Just do what's different or.
And just for the record, do we already have these plans?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
They were previously submitted with the initial submission.
These plans are dated uh seven eight twenty-one. Uh, they are the T-Mobile application. The previous plans I was showing were the AT&T application, so they have very similar information, but one focuses on AT&T, one focuses on T-Mobile.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, and these are the, these are the, these are the plans that are also posted on our website.
Okay. So just a quick brief overview overview, uh, as previously stated, the ATT application, we're coming off of Long Hill Road, putting a new compound next to a new proposed compound next to a new PSENG tower that is replacing an old PSENG tower. We are co-locating on that PSENG tower at the top on a an extension that was designed for wireless communication antennas. The base of the tower is a pulled light structure. We have a forty by fifty compound that is a fence compound, six foot high with a perma-hedge to conceal the equipment on the inside. Uh, this application proposes the T-Mobile equipment, which is three proposed cabinets on a four by twenty-foot concrete pad. The uh, the cabinets are outdoor type cabinets, so they look like uh refrigerators almost. And uh, as as opposed to what uh ATT was, it's like, which is more of a cabinet shelter style installation. However, pretty much everything is similar. It's the same. We're using cables, cabling system to attach the uh to connect the uh, equipment at the base to the antennas at the top. The radios will be installed at the base similarly to AT&T for a maintenance issues. Uh, PSENG does not allow installation of ra- remote radio heads on their towers. Uh, they don't want climbers needing to go up and maintain them, so the radios are put at the base. Cables are run up the tower to the antennas. The antennas for T-Mobile, we're proposing six antennas uh at a center line height of a hundred and sixty-seven and a half feet that will be above AT&T's uh installation, ten feet above, and then above that, we still have some real estate for an additional co-locator as we stated in the previous application. Uh, this, the this tower was analyzed for uh structural capacity. Uh, mountain analysis was done for the antennas attached to the to the pole, and an overall structural analysis was done for the tower itself with the uh PSENG loading from the lines and and transition lines and all the proposed loading from the telecommunications equipment. The this installation will be an unmanned installation. It will not require any pool of water or sewer. It will be remotely monitored. It will utilize the same access that is currently at the site that was used for the previous application or the previous installation, which comes along off of Long Hill Road along the the uh existing gravel and dirt drive to the site itself, so there's no improvements uh required there. And there is, and this one, we are not proposing any lighting at the base, and there is no lighting proposed on the tower. How generator is proposed uh either?
How big is the base with with your cabinets? What's the what's the size?
Of the equipment within he within the uh area here?
No, just the the whole area that's holding the equipment. What's this, the size of that, that uh, I guess, cement uh?
The concrete pad is uh four feet by twenty feet long. It allows for some future installation of of cabinets if necessary, say, say if the technology changes, then they need something else, six G, seven G, but um right now we're pro- proposing three cabinets.
Okay, but it does have room for for expansion.
Correct.
If I can just ask some follow-up questions, Mr. Chair, very briefly.
Sure, sure.
Um, Petros, you had an opportunity to read the structural analysis that was prepared, correct?
Correct.
And that uh report indicates that the tower meets all applicable codes and standards with respect to structural?
Correct.
And as of right now, we have AT&T and uh T-Mobile. We have AT&T co-locating with T-Mobile on this site. Um, is there room for any other telecommunications carriers?
Yeah, there's there's actually a a portion of the pole that is above uh T-Mobile's application or installation, which will accommodate a future third carrier if necessary, if one comes along and is looking for an installation in this area. Uh, there's space here that would uh negate the need to increase the height of the pole or add an addition to it, and there's also room within the compound to install additional ground equipment.
But to be clear, only AT&T was heard this evening as well as T-Mobile, and that carrier would have to come before the board for approval as well.
Correct.
Thank you. And the height of the fencing around the compound, I I don't know if I I might have missed that, but how how high is the fencing?
Yeah, six feet with 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 perma-hedge to conceal the uh equipment within the compound.
So further buffering along with the fencing?
Yes.
Um, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, of this particular witness at this time.
Hey, does our uh board planner have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Uh, you can take take down your uh chair screen. Does any of our uh board members have questions uh of this witness? No? Okay. Does any public member have questions of this witness?
Mr. Fast?
Of course.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have some questions, primarily uh focused on the compound. And the first part of it is, why so big, forty by fifty feet? What what's the? And the first part of it is, why so big, 40 by 50 feet? What's the rationale behind that?
I'm sorry, before you go, can you just give us your address, since this is a new hearing?
Oh, sure. It's Lawrence Fast, F A S T, 498 Long Hill Road in Gillette. And it happens to be adjacent to the site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Can you answer this question?
So, the compound was designed to accommodate co-location. In this case, we have two carriers. They both have their lease shares with their, with their ground equipment, requiring clearances around their equipment. And AT&amp;T is a little bit bigger lease area than T-Mobile's. T-Mobile's got a little more ground equipment right now. But a third, a third carrier can fit into the corner, as shown on, where we're shown on the plans, which would negate the need to expand the compound at this point. But we're also, we also have other equipment in there, which is telco equipment and electrical equipment that is out, outside the lease areas of the carriers. So typically, we design these to be rectangular or square shape to be, to take up as least amount of space as possible, but to fit as much equipment as we can.
So, you have PSENG equipment. Is PSENG equipment in there also?
No, this is just telecom equipment.
Yes, okay. Just to clarify, that's just the telecom. Okay, correct.
Well, if I can push forward on the numbers a little bit more, I mean, what you've cited is that the T-Mobile is four by 20, so that's 80 square feet.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Fast, it's four by 50.
It's how much?
Yeah, the equipment compound is 40 by 50. You said 40 by 20.
We're talking, I'm talking about the pads inside. We're trying to, because on the diagram, it looks like. Well, I'm looking at what, what's housed within the 40 by 50. There's 2,000 square feet is set aside. And if I start adding up the equipment, the, the concrete pads come to 144 square feet. If you double that, just for the sake of argument, bring it up to 250, 350 square feet, it's still a rather manageable size under there. But 2,000 square feet, we're looking at a parking lot of gravel. It covers most of the visual from my backyard, which is why I'm so particular about this. We are used to the, the foresters from Public Service said, at least after they cut down a lot of the trees, did come through and plant grasses, and they've got additional environmental plants for wildflowers and other eco-friendly plantings to go there. This is going to eat up a lot of that right in the middle of the residential adjacency.
Mr. Fast, is your question, isn't that true, and has the applicant found anything to mitigate that impact?
That's what you were anticipating. It was leading right up to, can we make this smaller and still function, including allowing expansion space for a third carrier of some sort? 2,000 feet seems excessive.
Your experience with respect to these proposed PSENG projects in other towns? I know this application stands on its own, but the 40 by 50 compound, is that consistent with what's proposed up and down with other PSENG projects?
That is correct.
Does that also include room for a truck to drive into if someone is maintaining it?
No. Well, we have, we do have access gates, and if you need to pull a truck in, you can. It does allow room for that. You can't bring construction equipment in, because the gates are only like 12 feet wide. It's very difficult to come in and out of there. But the, there's, like I said, there's other equipment in there. There's electrical equipment. There's, there's power meters. There's, there's tech, telco equipment that all requires clearances. So, even though we can try and squeeze everything in as, as tight as possible, it doesn't allow room for cabling. It doesn't allow room for the conduits that we need inside the grounding system to be able to give the clearance required by OSHA to put the other equipment in there and at the same time to allow for another carrier to come in. So, squeezing it down even more doesn't allow for the, the application to be expanded in the future without having to physically move it, move the fence and actually expand the compound.
Well, I'll, I'll leave the question where it was. It seems that, you know, even going triple what the request was still would leave you quite a bit of expansion, OSHA space, air clearance and other. I'll have to leave it at that, if that's what your answer, I'll leave it to the board to take that under advisement. Let's go on to the gravel base. Why, why the gravel base? The previous equipment was on its concrete pads mounted under the tower, and then it was the vegetative, natural environment around it. What's different now that we couldn't revert back to something like that?
The, the equipment is going to be on concrete. The gravel base is for maintenance of the area within the compound. If you, you don't have to mow it. There's no vegetation that grows. And it literally for being able to work safely within that area and not have to maintain weeds and overgrown vegetation.
Okay, thank you for your answer on that. Let me move on to a few other things. The, the perma hedge and the screening. I'd like to point out that the houses along Long Hill Road, along the ridge on the High Line are actually quite a bit higher. I know the USGS elevation given for my house, the foundation is 434 feet. Your diagrams are showing the compound would be somewhere in the 410 to 415 feet. And then looking down onto the old equipment, the one that's now been removed, that started out with perma hedge around it, and it really did know, nothing to screen it, because we're looking down at the roofs of the thing and most of the base. Fortunately, most of what we were seeing in the base, other than a little bit of concrete that crept out around each piece of equipment. I think there was some Siemens equipment originally. It changed a bit over the years. But most of it was the same vegetative appearance of greenery, and so that was much more pleasing. And it's just that the perma hedge, which I know was well-intended, it didn't do anything to screen, and after a few years, it got awfully shabby-looking.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but do you have a specific question? I just, I get, I get what you're saying, but I just, I want to zero in on the questioning of the witness.
Oh, let's look at the perma hedge. Assuming that you put it in anyway, and it's ineffective, is there a maintenance or replacement plan or anything in a long-term proposal so that we don't end up with something that starts out looking bad and gets worse?
Petros?
T-Mobile will maintain the site to stay within the, the approval requirements. So, if fence falls down, or there's an issue, or the perma hedge is missing, stolen, go replace it.
So, what you're saying is if the vegetation becomes dead or damaged, they will replace it?
Well, it's not, it's, it's fake vegetation.
Fake vegetation, okay.
Yeah.
Or becomes damaged or by nature, wind or something?
Yeah, it will be maintained.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's our intention to have an unsightly site. That's, that's obvious.
I understand. But I mean, what we, what we're hearing through the questions is that perhaps in the past, we've had some issues with this.
Understood, understood. And I mean, we, the applicant would be fine with conditioning. If, if the board was inclined to approve this evening with the requirement of maintaining that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just one last one, which is, again, related to the fact that we're looking out down from an elevation. I know from our second floor windows, which are at approximately 454 feet, we're looking down at 410. So, we're looking down onto that large gravel compound with perma hedge. Is there any chance of rethinking how any of this might work for the, the visual screening? Shrinking the compound or masking it with another approach other than what's been proposed in the plot that we've seen in the, the application?
Mr. Chairman, if I may answer Mr. Fast's question. Before deliberations, I will touch base with my client to see what we can do. I see, I can see that, Mr. Fast, you have, you do have an issue with the compound and the size. I'll see what I can do to work with the, the client to get some type of concession with respect to that before the, before the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from any members of public?
Well, since we don't have any other members of the public, I'm going to say no.
Oh, great. Okay. Excuse me. Next witness?
Certainly. My next witness is Ms. Frances Boshette, who will be testifying in her capacity as an RF consultant.
Okay, and as we already learned, there's no licensing for that, but just give us your background, your, your name, your business address and your background as a, as an expert.
Yes, my name is Frances Boshute. My business address is PureCon Solutions at 63 Beaver Brook Road, Lincoln Park, New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering. I've been employed for over 15 years as a radio frequency engineer, and I have testified before many boards and have been deemed an expert in this field of RF.
And we will deem you one also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frances, you prepared a report with respect to EMF and, the EMF report with respect to emissions, correct?
Correct.
And that was submitted, dated initially February 12, 2021. And I believe the latest report is October, latest date is October 28, 2021.
That is correct.
Thank you. And can you review the findings of that analysis for the board, please?
Yes, based on the proposed T-Mobile installation, the worst case resulted in a 0.87%, which is 114 times below the FCC limit for the general public for New Jersey. The factors are slightly less stringent. The result resulted in a 0.174, which is 574 times below the FCC limit for general public.
So, the testimony of this report confirms that the total maximum emissions level is far below any exposure limits imposed by federal and/or state guidelines?
Yes, it will be.
Thank you very much. And moving on to your coverage testimony, you prepared some coverage maps, correct, that were submitted with the application?
Yes, I believe so.
And do you have the ability? I know you were having some difficulty. You do have the ability.
Is it working today? Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yeah, great. I'm going to have you briefly go through those for the board, please.
Yes, of course. So, what we have in front is a propagation map, which was generated by a tool known as Asset. It is similar to other propagation tools that's within the industry standard. There are two. The first exhibit is T-Mobile's existing coverage from their existing network. The two colors that you see, the green represents the in-building coverage from those existing sites, and the yellow indicates on-street-in-vehicle. So, with the existing footprint is what you have. The proposed location is identified as the brown dot NJ06097. And as you can see, there is a very large footprint underneath the proposed. The proposed installation is to replace the existing coverage. And that existing footprint encompasses the roads to the north, which is White Bridge Road that runs along west to east, all the way down near Park Road to the south. And from east to west, it covers the Morris Town Road on the west of the proposed, all the way across to the Bridge Ave to the east. The next exhibit will demonstrate if the site was not to be approved. Let me see, try and scroll here.
I'm sorry, just as procedure notes, we do have to mark these as exhibit.
All right, let's, let's mark the, the one she was just talking about as A1.
Or do we just want to mark the whole compendium? Is that easier?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. We'll just mark all things A. How many pages is it?
It's a total of six.
Okay, A1 with six pages.
Thank you.
The second exhibit is the existing 700 megahertz LTE coverage from T-Mobile, and it is without the proposed site. So, as you can see, without the existing site. So, as you can see, there is a significant reduction in coverage. The area that was in green that encompassed White Bridge Road down to Park and from Morris Town Road to Bridge is now all in yellow. So, this site is providing T-Mobile with a very significant, large coverage footprint. The next exhibit demonstrates, again, similar to what was existing, the proposed new installation on the new PSENG tower. And as you can see, it replaces what was previously approved. And T-Mobile is able to maintain their service within this geographic area. The next exhibit, T-Mobile is, has an FCC license in many frequency bands. This is the high-band frequency. As you can see, the higher-band frequency does not propagate as far as the low band. Due to the functionality of the higher frequency, it is more susceptible to attenuation in the environment such as dense foliage and obstructions. As you can see, in the small area along, long, excuse me, Long Hill Road, the coverage footprint in green indicates the in-building service. If this site was not to be replaced, the next exhibit provides, demonstrates the gap in service that would result. So, as you can see, the coverage is now white to yellow, indicating gaps in service and limited amount of in-vehicle and on-street coverage. The last exhibit is a demonstration of the proposed facility on the new PSENG tower. And as you can see, coverage is restored, and T-Mobile's service and reliability is restored as well.
Thank you, Frances. Just a couple of follow-up questions. You were, you had an opportunity to read the township code, correct?
Correct.
And then, are there any permitted locations within the code that would fill this gap permanently? Or would such a use require variance?
No, there, there are none, and it would require variance.
I have nothing further of this witness, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Frances.
Thank you. Does our planner have any questions of this witness?
I do not.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness? Members of the public, do you have any questions of this witness?
Mr. Fast?
Yes, Larry.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you need me to identify again, or are we just?
No, you were identified once before.
Very good. Just as long as we've got a qualified RF engineer and want to ask the same thing that I asked at the last, at the last session, which is, are you aware of any emerging technologies which might supplement or replace, completely replace these high towers with smaller distributed or any other RF technologies which may impact how long we're going to have to have the current technology in place?
I do not see anything in the near, in the near future, replacing these macro-type facilities in the wireless industry at this time.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that, but thank you for your honest answer. That's all I have right now.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Next witness?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. My last witness is Mr. Tim Kronk, who will be testifying as a professional planner, writing the planning proofs for this evening.
Okay, Mr. Kronk, would you give us your full name and, and business address, please?
Yes, uh, Timothy M. Kronk, K-R-O-N-K. Business address, PO Box four-six-five, Mendham, New Jersey.
And what are your credentials?
I am a New Jersey licensed professional planner and AICP certified planner. I have approximately thirty years of land use experience predominantly in New Jersey. And I was accepted by this board on the temporary tower uh, application last year.
Yeah, I guess we'll accept you again.
Why, thank you.
And just one more question, Mr. Kronk, your license is still in good standing, correct?
Yes, my license is still in good standing.
Thank you very much. Uh, you can proceed on your, on your planning analysis, please.
Okay, um, the subject application by T-Mobile is for a D-six height variance. Um, the original application that was approved under a, a prior entity OmniPoint, which was assumed by uh, T-Mobile, uh, obtained approval for the, their installation. I think the application was in ninety-eight, but the resolution was actually dated in nineteen ninety-nine. So uh, T-Mobile has actually been at the site even longer uh, than, than AT&amp;T was. The, uh, as the attorney stated in her opening, um, T-Mobile never had any intent to abandon the site when uh, PSCNG forced them to remove their equipment from the existing lattice tower that was in place. And that's why we did obtain the approvals and did construct the temporary uh, facility in their ballast installation in the right-of-way. And that was purely to maintain the existing coverage uh, that was coming from the uh, original installation on the lattice tower. Uh, as has been testified to subsequently, uh, PSCNG has constructed the new um, uh, support towers. Those new Y towers, the first time I'm seeing one as well. This uh, uh, tower, as it was described by um, the radio frequency engineer, as well as the engineer, you know, does come with some of the, the problems of that, that slope section of the tower where antennas cannot be placed there. So there's only two options on these type of towers, and that is to go, you know, below where it's too low to provide the radio frequency uh, requirements, or it has to be extended to the top to get above the lines. Since we did receive uh, the use approval in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, this application really is focusing on the, the height itself since the, the use uh, does run with the land, and we do believe that that use is uh, still uh, valid. And we are here because we are at a higher elevation, not by our own choosing, but that of uh, the uh, requirements of design requirements and engineering requirements of PSCNG for uh, the locations that we can install the, the antennas. Um, also, as we heard from the radio frequency engineer, this is, you know, very close uh, proximity to the original uh, tower location. The coverage footprint is, it really isn't changing much. And even though we are getting a little more uh, height, it's not that we're trying to obtain coverage. Once again, it's purely uh, where we are uh, being directed. Um, as, as you're aware, wireless telecommunications are uh, become an integral part of our society, not just uh, professional business personal, but uh, most importantly, the emergency services uh, that we do use them for. And that combined with uh, the fact that T-Mobile does possess the requisite FCC license uh, to provide wireless telecommunication services in this port of New Jersey. Uh, that goes mostly to the particular suitability of the chosen location. Suitability is very similar to um, the original application twenty, over twenty years ago. And the site uh, certainly does remain uh, suitable for uh, this installation. And as I stated, the additional height really does not uh, was, is not driven by T-Mobile trying to uh, provide additional coverage. It was just purely a, um, an aspect of uh, the availability on this ta, on the tower. The um, uh, under the SECA analysis, first, we identify the public interests at stake. That goes to the uh, the um, um, the use being uh, a use that does promote the general welfare through enhanced telecommunications services. We balance that against the uh, the negative aspects. In this case, um, the largest portion of the negative impacts of this type of application comes down to the visibility. Um, you know what the tower looks like, and we know, you know, what the a few small antennas will look like on top of the tower. I do have some photo simulations of what this installation will look like if the board is interested in seeing them. Um, under the third step of the SECA analysis is to impose any reasonable conditions to help ameliorate the negative impacts of the application. Prior to the start of the application, I was considering the, really the primary uh, mitigation was the perma-hedge itself, because that does, I understand that some of the residents do look down into the compound, and that doesn't help them a lot. But um, the ones that don't have the view into the compound, it certainly does uh, screen the, the visibility of the mechanicals inside. And for the um, the neighbor, Mr. Fast, um, I certainly agree with him. The uh, perma-hedge uh, material uh, that was installed in the, in the late nineties, that was essentially the first generation. Um, the technology, the perma-hedge technology has advanced like everything else. And I will say that the, the materials they're using now are an improvement on what was installed in the nineties. Uh, both in terms of look and, and durability. And I certainly do believe that is, is a reasonable condition to uh, say that the carrier is obligated to, you know, maintain uh, that perma-hedge in a uh, you know, reasonable condition for it to function as a visual mitigation um, for anybody that's not looking directly down into the compound. And uh, with regard to the, the compound size itself, if, if the board is interested, um, I do believe that we could um, at least um, you know, pose the question to PSCNG about um, you know, cutting out that one corner that they had reserved for a third carrier. Um, I can't say that they will do it, but we could at least um, approach them and ask them uh, on behalf of the board if that was, if that was requested.
Well, before you do that, I, I would be hesitant to make something smaller if you only have to come back here and make it bigger.
Well.
Silly.
I, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to.
I realize that, but we don't, we don't wanna cause a problem, because if there's a space on the, on the antenna for another carrier and another carrier may, or the county or somebody may wanna use it, and then you'll be back here saying, we wanna make the compound bigger. You know, I mean, that's kind of uh.
Just based upon the discussions, I, I, you know, I was just throwing it out there. I wasn't saying.
Yeah, I, I understand, but sometimes in order, sometimes you do one thing, you cause two more problems.
Absolutely understood.
So I don't think that's probably a wise thing to do.
Okay. Uh, would the, does the board wanna see the photo simulations that were prepared?
Yes.
Okay, I will attempt to share my screen.
Were these previously submitted?
No, I know they weren't. No.
What exhibit number are we up to, Amanda?
Two, I believe. Exhibit two, yeah.
Exhibit two?
Eight-two, yeah.
Okay, do you see those?
We see your list, we don't see it.
You see my list?
Yes.
Um, what did I do?
Open it.
I did.
Can we check out your cookbooks?
Oh, I think if you un-share your screen, it might show you all the other ones that are open. If you have multiple screens. Does that help you? If you share again?
There it is. How's that?
There we go.
Did that work? Okay. Hey, same thing I saw before.
So this is what the tower looks like, okay?
Yes, this is what the current um, tower looks like. This is uh, these photos were taken uh, October twenty-first. And they do accurately depict the existing conditions at that time. I haven't been out there since, so I'm, wanna throw that caveat in.
Amazing, you took those photographs?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is a, a photo from uh, you know, right at the edge of the stone um, access road at Long Hill Road. Um, you will see the uh, the tower itself, that's a hundred and fifty feet. And this, and this is the extension. You see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay, that's for, so that's the extension for the carriers. These three little drape things there, um, those are actually what they use. They, they use to pull the line, so those won't be there once the lines are up. But I just left them in the, in the photographs. And then if we go to the next one, is the computer simulation from the same location. And you'll see that um, not knowing how today was gonna play out, I actually showed both T-Mobile and AT&amp;T in these, in these simulations.
That was a good set, thank you.
Okay. Um, next one, this is a view from seventy-five Hickory Tavern Road, just at the uh, opposite end of the uh, PSCNG right-of-way, looking the other direction. Once again, those little drape things you see are the cable, uh, pulleys that'll be gone. And then we move to the computer simulation showing both uh, AT&amp;T on the bottom, T-Mobile, and then the space for uh, for the future. Next location, this is also Hickory Tavern, but this is up at the intersection of Land Street. And just over the house, you can see the top portion of the tower visible here where the cursor is. And then in the computer simulation, the two antennas arrays for T-Mobile and AT&amp;T have been inserted. And the last photo location is back to Long Hill Road. This is tucked over on the other side of the right-of-way. And in this existing conditions photo, um, besides the tower, the new Y tower on the left here, you can see this is the temporary tower where the two carriers are located. And this utility pole over here is a temporary utility pole. Uh, so you will notice when I flip from that one to the next one, both of those go away.
Okay.
I'll go back.
That looks so much like, less cluttered.
Yeah, and you, there's also actually some coax that's running along here that you can actually even see that was taken out in the, the computer simulations as well. I'll go back one more time. See, so both of those, both of those um, go away in the, the permanent uh, installation. And once again, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T in that space for a, a future carrier uh, available as per the, the, the way PSCNG installed the tower, not per, per the carriers. Um, so as I stated, the, the visual impact is the primary, primary negative uh, aspect associated with these applications. And we perform the actual balancing task between the promotion of the general welfare through enhanced telecommunication services against the certainly minimal visual intrusion associated with the antenna installation here. Um, and then perform the actual balancing tests. And um, you know, depending if you wanna weigh in the, the uh, the possible mitigation factors. Um, when you perform the balancing test, I certainly believe that you will find that the board can grant this variance at a substantial detriment to the public good. Uh, the analysis here does, isn't based upon whether this is visible or not. The, the analysis is, does the visibility rise to the level of a substantial detriment? And I certainly will um, do believe that this uh, installation does not rise to that level. And I do believe the board can grant this variance without substantial detriment to the public good.
I have a question. Where the compound's gonna go? Whereabout is that located to where the, that tower is?
Uh, the compound is actually behind the tower from here.
Okay, so what, will it be visible from the street?
You know what, um, you might see a little bit of it if you kinda went right on. Might have to walk up the driveway a little bit. Uh, I was kinda trying to get two views from Long Hill, and I wanted to get the temp, so that's kinda why I didn't. I, I, I didn't get something there. I was more, you know, trying to get.
So you might see the top of the fence or.
Yes, yeah, from, yep. And they've also, you know, the way the grades changed during the construction too. It's also a, a little different than it was before.
Uh, you can, you can un-share your screen.
Okay.
All right, uh, any questions of your witness? Uh, from the loyal.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Any questions from board members? Any questions from our planner? No.
Okay.
All right, any questions from the public?
Going once, oh, there we go. Mr. Fast?
Of course, I'm back. Um, yes, for, for the planner, um, this is a, some questions about the, the, the visual impacts in the broader area um, from the Great Swamp, coming in from uh, from the Harding side of New Vernon Road or other um, uh, view sheds, a, a, I guess along Myersville Road. There are areas where this thing is sticking up. The pictures that you showed on Hickory Tavern Road were um, quite realistic of what the, what it looks like. Um, since some of these areas are um, under some level of federal wildlife control and other was there any outreach to any of the organizations, the Department of Interior, Interior, Fish and Wildlife, uh, New Jersey Conservation Foundation, Great Swamp Watershed Association, any of them about the visual impacts in their view sheds?
Oh, the, the way this worked um, is the towers themselves and were the responsibility of PSCNG. So they were responsible for all of their um, environmental uh, permits and approvals. So they would have been the ones that would have reached out to any of those agencies. Under the FCC license, T-Mobile was responsible for filing for their installation, which was added to the PSCNG tower. So we did a, we did a NEPA section one oh six, and we did a SHIPO filing for the T-Mobile installation.
Explain that, layman's terms, what is that?
Okay, um, there's, there's, because the FCC license of T-Mobile homes is issued by the federal government, there is certain environmental guidelines that they are obligated to comply with. The first one is uh, it's a NEPA, uh, National Environmental Policy Act. And that tells us what we have to analyze as part of uh, any, any site, actually. Um, but in this case, we weren't submitting the whole tower. It was just the, just the installation. And, and part of that is SHIPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. So that also had to be submitted and approved as well, and it was.
Okay, and in that, does it take into consideration views and, and what is that, what are those applications taking?
Well, the, the, the SHIPO one would only really take into consideration um, the visibility if you were, if the, the property was impacted by any uh, historic districts or properties.
Okay.
That's when they consider it. Otherwise, otherwise putting antennas on a um, electric transmission tower when it's not impacted by any um, type of historic um, zones or properties, the visibility really doesn't come into play.
What about the other one, the environmental one?
The environmental one, that one, um, T-Mobile has completed all of their.
Yeah, but what does that take into consideration?
Oh, oh, that's, that one is um, um, wetlands and um, endangered species, endangered vegetation, that type of stuff.
Okay, so.
So the larger permits Mr. Fast is asking about, I think are the ones that would have been um, were the ones that were addressed by PSCNG when they actually permitted the towers themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Because I can, well, I can speak to that because I've got the report that uh, between uh, Great Swamp and uh, Fish and Wildlife about the towers that are running uh, along with, uh, I guess some of it's within the confines of the federal district.
Mr. Fast, is that a report that you can provide to the board?
Um, sure, it's, it's available on the internet. That's where I found it. Yeah, but it's fairly easy. Uh, just let me know what mechanism you'd like. I can get it to the board secretary.
Oh, timeout. What, what is that again? What report is this again?
This is a report on the, the towers, the electrical um, Y pylons that have gone in. And this was a, a visual impact statement done um, regarding the power transmission line. It did not include any that had the fifty-foot mast extension for cellular service.
Does that report have, does that, does that report have any bearing on this application?
Well, only that um, it, that was done on, not for the power side of it, not at all. But the um, for the, the added-on part of the cellular structure on top of the tower, which is what we're discussing here, that doesn't do, I haven't seen a report on any of that, and that's.
Okay, so I don't think the board needs that report that you're dogging. I don't think it's relevant for us tonight. Because it really, it only goes to whether PSCNG obviously got their permit to do the tower. And uh, it, it obviously, no agency felt it necessary to amend it to, to include this, this uh, extension.
And it sort of fell through the cracks in in a a sense, because there's really only this one tower. This Hickory Tavern Road, Long Hill Road Tower, that has the extension on it in our immediate area of scope. These towers all the way back through Chatham, Madison, all the way to Livingston, and I don't see any other ones that are comparable. What we've got here.
Okay. Well, I don't think, I don't think the particular report you're referring to, the board needs to see tonight for any reason.
No, I don't think it's, I don't think that report's relevant, other than to say there are reports on these visual impacts. And I'm trying to find out from which agencies, since that one's obviously it's the federal government from public service. Was there anything comparable because of the cell visual impact in our Hickory Tavern?
I I from what I've heard, there isn't any, the applicant doesn't.
Can I just ask about one additional form, which is part of FCC's directives on the the um Form six twenty-one? Which is a co-location submission packet. Uh there's a section, I'm I'm reading off my screen, section for section two. Dot eight dot nine um historic properties, which is similar to section one oh six, except that it not only includes. The buildings that are already listed on the registers, the state and national, which is what SHIPO normally reports on. They just read out from their database, but also eligible for inclusion on the national register. Um which is ones that were cited by Morris County in our area, including Myersville Village Center. And the up uplands area up Hickory Tavern Road, um which are deemed to be um likely listed. But they are not listed yet, but they've been in our master plan going back to nineteen ninety-six. They are reiterated in our.
Uh Larry, hold on one second. Is there a question?
Yes, so were you aware of those? Was any of that reviewed? Um was there a Form six twenty-one submitted?
I actually don't know the number of the form. Um we do not perform our uh SHIPO analyses uh in-house. They are done by a SHIPO consultant who used to work for uh historic preservation. Um and alls I know is we have an approval um from that from that agency for this installation. So I'm not an expert in that area, and that's all I can tell you is that I I know the due diligence was done and I know there wasn't a problem. The forms they use, I cannot address.
This is informational for me, and I have a feeling I've wandered a little far field of our our local Board of Adjustment. But uh it's good background information since we do have, you know, we've got an interesting visual impact, a very, very strong one. And I have a feeling it's gonna come back.
And Mr. Fast, actually, you were talking about the Y towers. Um yes, I don't believe they go towards Livingston, but if you go the other way. Um the bridge of the Bridgewater section has a a number of these Y towers um already uh already installed. And heading out towards Branchburg. So if you want to see some.
Do any of those, do any of those have to have?
All the the all of the Y towers have to have the extensions for for cellular above it. Because you cannot go on that angle part, and for most installations, you can't go with that, you know, that straight section at the bottom. So every one of the Y towers has to have this extension above it.
Okay.
And actually, yeah, some of those are bigger that they have, you know, three carriers that are already um, you know, approved and going on there. So it's 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 common if you're going the other direction.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm done in this segment. I'll be back.
Okay, well, thank you for your information. Um any other witnesses?
No, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does any of the board members have any questions at this time of any of the of the applicant's uh witnesses? Oh, okay. Yes, Jonathan.
Just a quick question. Um prior to the uh installation of the temporary and and the taking down of the old. Uh P S E and G towers, there was a a site that was a pad site that was fenced off, correct?
Yes.
Yep. What was, what was the size of that site? Does anyone know?
No, I don't know. I don't know the size. And actually, that one had, oh, maybe, maybe the engineer has it.
Yeah, you know?
Because that one actually had the three, had three carrier or.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because if it had three carriers, what was the size of that site?
Let me take a look, because I didn't actually work on that one, so see if I can find that information.
And are the, I guess the second question is, are there any uh is there any requirements or additional changes since that you know of? Since that was put put into place uh in terms of space requirements that would require it to be any different size than what this one is? Or what the old one was?
Yes, actually, that's a very good point. Um the, at least T-Mobile, um we knew this P S E and G project was coming down the line. So T-Mobile wanted to upgrade the site for a while, but they weren't going to do it until the new tower came up. So that's why this one um was older and less equipment. Um because they just said, we're not going to upgrade it. If it's gonna get torn down, we'll wait till we get the new tower up and then we'll put all of our new equipment. So yes, they do definitely have more equipment than the original installation. I don't know about AT&T, but I would guess it was probably something similar, and then the county had their shelter as well.
I I don't have that readily available.
Well, I think you got an answer by saying that there was some new equipment on there, so in there.
Definitely new equipment.
Yeah. All right, um does any member of the public wish to make comments on this application? Larry? Go ahead.
If you can come off video, actually, just so I can swear you in.
Sure.
Yeah, you have to sworn in now.
Please, I'm ready to go.
I I have to make him a panelist in order to take him off. Hold on.
Okay.
Promote the panelist. Larry, do you have video capability?
Yes, I do. I'm just trying to.
There you go. Can you raise your hand?
I should have combed my hair.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
You raise your right hand, sorry. Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I wanted to break this into um two separate areas. One is the compound. If we could just continue a little with the discussion. Um, Mr. Chairman, I would um argue that I would rather see it uh back to a practical, smaller size. Um and if it means a separate hearing in the year twenty twenty-five, because another co-licitor comes on, so be it. It'll um for those of us, and I'm informally acting as spokesman for some of the other neighbors along Long Hill Ridge. Who uh maintain contact with me through this whole project.
Informally, of course, only because you cannot represent other.
Informally, I'm not representing them.
No, I understand. I I know what you mean.
But I I have a feeling they're tuned in tonight and watching, and I'm I'm just raising my uh questions for my wife and myself. Um we'd rather have the smaller compound, as small as is feasible for engineering and safety purposes. And as much a part of the natural environment as could possibly be in there. Would also like to bring up that uh my wife, who has for many years been a uh had been a board member and active. Uh participant at the Great Swamp Watershed Association, worked closely with a gentleman named Russ Fenari. Um he is the manager of Environmental Policy Enterprise at Public Service. He's kind of the top-down environmental designer guy, and they had their plans for restoration after this tower project. And he would be a very good person to work with to find the best combination of where engineering meets environment. Because that's pretty much what they're doing with the whole right of way, the entire length from Roseland to Lambertville. And so um if we can encourage his involvement, we've been in touch with him, my wife primarily, during the course of the construction on this project. Anyway, so it's not in a new relationship, but we would suggest that's probably the best thing for um for Long Hill Township and the sensitivity. To the environment that we're trying to maintain in the Great Swamp Watershed. So that's all I have to say on that. And then the last part of it is just um maybe an adjunct uh to Mr. Crunk's photo simulations. I had sent um Deborah a photograph taken within the last couple of days. Of basically the as-built, what our house looks like from the front, and I'd like to share that just to give you an idea of. What we're up against in this neighborhood and and, you know, what we're going to be living with, and how can we mitigate this? Is that possible, Deb? Thank you.
So Marcus has exhibit oh one. It's just one photograph?
Yes, one photograph. It's very tiny there right now. I guess it was in the.
Wait, let me, let me see if I can uh make it bigger. Hold on a minute.
Looks like it's trying to share with your.
And just for the record, you took this photograph and accurately depicts the property as it presently exists?
It does. This is shot from the front of four ninety-eight Long Hill Road from the the roadway. This is looking to the north from Long Hill, from the Long Hill Road pavement, and.
I don't think I, I don't think I can make it bigger, because it's coming, it's coming from my work computer. I'm I'm at home tying it into my work computer, so I don't, it's not letting me.
Well, if those, if you can, if we can't make it any bigger, if you can squint at it, you can see it's our our two-story house. Dates back to nineteen oh six. I've lived here since nineteen eighty. And rising above into the sky where the trees are, you see the cell mast. And the top part of the the Y tower, and that's the permanent view now. It's risen an extra fifty feet from the height of the old tower, which was just barely screened by the old growth trees that we have. The new one isn't going to be screened anymore. So I just wanted to share that view with you.
Does anybody have any questions on that before I remove, stop share?
No.
Okay, I think that's about all we can do on that, but I think I'm also think you got the idea.
Okay, thank you. I think you can take him off as a panelist now.
That the old tower was not, it wasn't a pad under the old tower, it was just the feet.
Oh, I'm sorry, the he he he, I have to just mute him, because um uh once you promote it to a panelist. You, the only choice is to remove him completely, so to keep him in the meeting now.
Okay, thank you.
Duly noted. Yeah. So he will, he will say, we'll just wait, and Mr. Fast, thank you, Mr. Fast.
All right. Okay, guys, uh would you like to sum up, please?
Uh certainly, I'll be very brief. Um you heard from testimony from the site engineer, our consultant and our planner. Provided expert testimony in their respective field as to the requested variance released this evening and why um. You know, more what we're proposing is um at the direction of P S E and G, the P S E and G upgrade. Um we're also here for direction from the the township as a result of having to go at a higher height. Um than what our zoning permit was initially issued at. I echo the sentiments of the uh prior applicant that we are adjusting to the P S E and G project. Um we want to operate safely and at the same time ride adequate coverage for the township. Um the site is located in the area of deficient coverage, which permits us to provide service where there is currently a deficiency. Um there's clear clearly a specific need for these services uh caused by the removal and replacement of applicant's existing location. Uh in light of the testimony provided and a demonstration of the requisite criteria having been met, we, as the applicant respectfully request that the board grant preliminary final approval. And these six bands will be testified, as testified throughout throughout the course of this hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um. Gary, would you like to start the deliberations?
Um sure, I I think that the applicant has uh existed in this location before. On what was quite a different tower, and I and I think that it's it's unfortunate that these towers seem to be. Kind of part of the issue here that uh makes people not loving it so much. That being said, uh because they were there before, um and they're just trying to be back on the sit on the towers again. Uh the benefit to the community and um operating as a business. I'm inclined to uh accept this application. I'm curious about how they might change the um the compound and and make it smaller. I don't know that I heard that part yet.
Okay, uh thank you. Uh Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um once again, we are saddled with a. I'll sit back, keep it quiet. Uh we we are saddled with a um proposition to approve this or not approve this. And our hands are kind of tied. Um I do believe that. This applicant is is going forth in a fair manner as is approved by law. I don't think it is uh optimal. Uh Mr. Fast will tell you that it is not. But that all being said, I unfortunately will say that I I will approve this app. I would be in favor of approving this application.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Um I I think that, I will thank, yeah, thank everyone again for, and Mr. Fast especially for for staying uh with us this long. And asking uh very many interesting and necessary questions. Uh but I do think, and and I wish there was some way to ameliorate the issues. Uh you know, maybe we can try to utilize some of the stealth technology uh that the Air Force and Navy have for their for their. To create some sort of reflective uh material that you wouldn't be able to see, but absent that, unfortunately, I think that the. Uh the applicant has shown that this site is suitable, was used in the past for a similar purpose. Uh without the service uh it's providing, without the service on this specific site, it would be inadequate provision of of the service they're providing. And without viable alternatives that would probably be uh more detrimental. Uh and this will, I want to feel this will impair the public good. I think that the the positives outweigh the negatives. And therefore I'll be supportive of this and hope for stealth technology sometime in the future.
Thank you. Mike?
And because it's the utility site, there's not a. Lot of options here based on the testimony um uses this particular site in this particular configuration that's necessary in order for things to work. And applicants done as good of a job as they can to uh to minimize impacts. But um there's not a lot of other options in how to configure or locate this, so I still think the positives outweigh the negatives and plans more in favor.
Thank you. Uh Scott?
I do have to agree with Mike um that there's not a lot that can be done here. That P S E and G has put up these towers um and we're looking at T-Mobile and AT&T that have to put their. Um equipment on these towers, and there's not really other, any other options that can be done. So I do agree, and um I'm in favor for this.
Thank you. Joe?
I uh I agree with everything that's been uh said, so I would also um be in favor.
Thank you. Uh I I also uh believe that uh it's a beneficial use. Obviously, we're not all happy with the fact that the S E G came and made the towers bigger, but uh due to their need of power. They had to, and due to that, we're we're pretty much saddled in, you know, with having to. Put these cell towers a lot higher than they usually were, these cell antennas. As far as the the size of the compound, I understand Mr. Fast's uh hesitation for this. But it's not, it's not the board's uh habit to make additional work for itself or the applicant. And there is a really high probability that either the county or another carrier will come in at some point. To use the other unused section of this pole, thereby necessitating a larger compound. So to make them make something smaller, just to go back to make it bigger for a temporary time. And we all know that these things, it, you know, tend to uh progress and at some point get bigger. It doesn't make sense for them to have to come back here, spend money for all these experts, just to get another ten feet on a compound. When they obviously need more space, because what they're using is uh more equipment, uh bigger cabinets. Uh larger service and and things get bigger as they get more useful. useful, unfortunately, with the 5G, whatever Gs are up to now. And I understand the visual aspect of it. Hopefully with the perimeter, whatever they call that, has gotten a little more, has gotten better, has gotten more, more, you know, useful as far as shading. I, I think that, you know, the, the applicant has done the best they could with what the situation they have. And I would be in favor of it. The positives far outweigh the negatives. So I would also be in favor of it. Do we have a resolution?
We do. This would be a motion, assuming the board wants to grant this application to grant preliminary and final site plan approval as well as D6 height variance relief. I think the only condition that we had was the maintenance, but that's really kind of a standard condition that we would have anyway. So that's nothing new. And then I'm not sure if Ms. Narich wants to ask the same question that counsel before asked if she can proceed at her own risk before the resolution's ready.
Took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you. You know, if, if we could go start at, at least the application process for a building permit before the resolution is adopted. And I understand I have to go through Deborah in order to do so. And I'm happy to do so.
Yep, same scenario. Then since there's really no need for a resolution compliance with our board professionals, we'll get the plan signed. Well, you can submit all the documents to me. I will set up the files. And as soon as the resolution is ready, the clock will start for the construction department.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Do I hear motion? Somebody? Jonathan, did you make it?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
Sorry. Second.
Second. All right.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Janakis?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
After much deliberation, yes.
And Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Ms. Robertson?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, Chairman of the Board. Appreciate you hearing us out this evening, this late hour. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time and, and your opinions. Thank you.
Ms. March, you might want to fix the clock behind you.
Clock, babe.
Or as some people say, CDO, because you have to put it in the right, right.
How did you see that? My head is in the way.
She's very observant. Okay, do we have, we don't have any other business, do we?
No, their business. And this board's basically in recess now until December 21st.
All right, yes. Guys, have a good Thanksgiving. Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving. And we'll see you at the volunteer dinner on the 7th.
Yeah.
Show up for that. All right.
Happy, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy turkey.
Take, take care, guys.
All right.
All right, eye, second eye. All right, very good.
All in favor, eye, okay.
Wait, the guests left. We can talk about them.